Call this Board of Supervisors meeting, January 28th, 2019. Cabe will be going into closed meeting. Be it resolved, Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby enter into closed meeting for the purpose of discussion the following. Section 2.2-3711, consulting with legal counsel, employee, or retained by the public body regarding, I can't even say that word, legal matters regarding the provision of legal advice by such counsel, old Blacksburg Middle School property. Madam Secretary, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, will you call roll, please?
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Chisikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Seven eyes.
In closed session. Is there a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, will you call roll, please?
Mr. Chisikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Seven eyes, one a stick.
Whereas, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has conveyed a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Code requires a certification by the Board that such closed meetings was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore, be it resolved that Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certify that, to the best each member's knowledge, one, on public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convey the closed meetings were heard, discussed, and considered by the Board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, will you call roll, please?
Mr. Moss?
I will abstain from this vote due to reasons given for previous extensions on the subject of the old Blacksburg Middle School site.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Chisikowski?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Six eyes, one a stick.
Next, invocation and pledge of allegiance, West County Administrator, too, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next, in the public hearing, amendment to the zoning ordinance, chapter 10, section 10-54. Mr. Chair?
Emily Gibson, our planning director, is with us this evening to review the changes related to this particular zoning ordinance.
The first public hearing we have tonight is related to a text change to the zoning The section that was provided in your packet is identified there as 1054, which is titled Special Development Approvals. This wasn't a text amendment that we entered into sort of willingly. This is based on the 2016 General Assembly changes for conditional zoning and proffers. So you'll notice that we kind of show that whole section, and what we've done similar to other conference of updates is you see it all as stricken. And Marty typically does that when he formats it when we have a lot of changes because it's just cleaner to look at it the other way. But a lot of the things are the same, and I'll try to highlight what's the same and what's different as we go through the presentation tonight. As we looked at the language that Marty prepared for us for what we needed to legally comply with the state code changes, we also identified some other revisions that were small in nature, but while we had it open and we were making changes, we decided to go ahead and look at. So I'll walk through those with you also. The commission reviewed this multiple times after staff prepared it and ultimately held their public hearing on December the 12th of 18, not 19, like that slide says. They haven't pre-holded. So the minor corrections are really clerical punctuation, capitalization type things, but you'll notice some places it says Director of Planning, some places it said Planning Director, so we made that consistent with Director of Planning, I believe. We had, we put in conceptual development plan because we have a definition for that. There was language in there called plat of rezoning, which we don't have a definition for, so we just felt like that really cleaned that up. And then days was a really big issue. One, because we wanted to make sure that we were allowing the days needed for advertisements to make sure staff had time to review things, to make sure that we had time to get what you guys were hearing at a hearing level, to make sure that's what had been advertised. But the word days was used a lot of different ways. And what we tried to do, instead of just having the word days, we moved it to business days whenever possible. And that's very helpful because if it's calendar days, but it's one of the months like December or January, or sometimes even November, where we have a lot of holiday time, then those days get lost and it becomes too burdensome to make the advertising deadlines and things that we need to do. So we moved it to business days to just try to simplify that. And then designate was put in several places so that it wasn't so specific that it had to be me or the zoning administrator only. You know, we don't have very large staff, but the staff that's capable of meeting with people or answering questions or reviewing them, we subbed in designate, just for consistency. So just to take a step back for one second, I did mention that conditional zoning, we usually use the word proffers for that. Montgomery County is one of the localities in the state that's enabled by the Code of Virginia to accept proffer conditions, and those are voluntarily made only as part of rezoning applications, so that's what we're speaking about specifically tonight, and they're intended to offset the impacts by the application. And I mentioned before, there were widespread changes in 2016, and those were really geared at residential proffers. So some of the things that you'll see that are new in our text is separating onsite and offsite, and really identifying that language that's specifically attributable, which is language from the state code. That direct benefit for that has to be consistent with conference of plan. Outlines content required in proffer statements, so currently, we have kind of a form that we use, but we created a form in conjunction with Marty to make sure that it's a template that we can provide people in a Word document format. They can then go in and put whatever proffers they want, but that template is readily recordable. So we'll actually be recording proffers now if this change is adopted, and that's really positive, so if anyone is actually doing title work on the property, it's very easy to find that there are conditions associated with the zoning of the property. And a lot of the language talks about making sure that I have time to look at them and that Marty has time to look at them. So we have basically a formal procedure on the submittal and any amendments and how they get reviewed. Even though the code changes we're talking about today haven't been adopted, we have been more formal with our review since the 2006 changes, so we get them in writing, we review them in writing. Some of the changes that are in the General Assembly right now take out the strictness that we've had to follow before. We could just sort of have a conversation, but we really couldn't do that since 2016, so we have been more formal. We'll see if that gets adopted, but this is meant to target that, to make sure that staff doesn't provide anything that makes it seem where we want an unreasonable proffer, and the county attorney has time to make sure that we're not letting an unreasonable proffer get to you for consideration. The Planning Commission, they have to have that proffer statement in place 10 business days prior to the hearing, and that ensures that that's what we advertise, that's what the public's got a chance to see, and that's what they know they're talking about because they get their packet about a week ahead of time. Minor changes up till noon of the day of the meeting, and that's really meant to be those clerical things, capitalizations, nothing substantial. Anything that would be substantial, there's code language in there that says that the commission could elect to hear the application without that amendment, and that's really just because, again, that's what was in place prior to the night of the hearing. The commission can then have some different options as to whether they will continue the meeting based on the changes. They could make a recommendation to delete one or more of the proffers, and then that final statement, ultimately, whatever the applicant wants to take forward to you guys, we have to get within three business days. And that makes sure that we can meet those deadlines for advertising to keep your hearing pretty much on schedule with how we have it now. So the commission will have it, and sometimes we can get it to you within two weeks. Modifications to onsite proffers after Planning Commission, so onsite and offsite kind of have two different tracks. Onsite is meant to, you could still act on them if they are onsite and if the commission feels comfortable with it. If there are modifications that come after the Planning Commission, you guys can actually send it back, which you could do now, but this sort of codifies all of those options if you think the Planning Commission needs to take another look at it. Offsite proffers, any changes made immediately means it gets referred back, so if there was an offsite change, it would immediately go back through the process. And that's targeted at just making sure that we're all, you know, making sure that we're not accepting anything unreasonable, making sure that offsite proffers really get the scrutiny that they need to make sure we're being compliant. And any substantial deletion to the statement, the Board can also refer it back to the commission. There are some exclusions built in, clerical errors, if there's something that's deemed to be needed for state code compliance, and then also if the commission made a recommendation to delete or make a change, that could be an exclusion if they recommended leaving one off that wasn't substantial. So there is a lot of text there that sort of tries to get at all of these items. So the language also talks about adoption and effect, that you can adopt in whole or part, which is something that you already can do, you don't have to accept every proffer. I mentioned that we're going to be recording those, that is new, we don't currently record them. Development has to be in compliance with proffer conditions, which is the same code language we have now, and the surety or bond is required, and that's also already in the ordinance. Administration, the items related to zoning administrators, administration and enforcement, that language is consistent with what we already have, and that appeals will go through and be, appeals of interpretation of proffers are heard by the Board of Supervisors, and that is what we have in the code now also. I want to walk you through just a couple of other small changes as part of this process and as part of lining up all the dates and times and requirements. We're making some changes to our applications. One of the items the code now says is that there's a pre-application meeting with staff prior to submittal. This was an item we talked to the commission a lot about. We wanted to make sure that it didn't seem that that was undue burden. Really, most of our applicants do it now, and whether it's a large application or even a small one, your smaller applications tend to be small-time developers or even just an individual homeowner who's not going through this process maybe ever again, or has gone through it before. So it gives us a chance to walk them through expectations, to know about the hearing requirements, to know about dates, things like that, and to make sure that they know what a complete application is. Because if they come to us with an application on the deadline that's not complete, that does bump them back a full month. So it gives staff the opportunity to kind of walk everyone through the process. There's some information in there about optional community meeting and how that could be handled. There's also sort of an explanation on what we're looking for detail-wise. That's in the code. And the packet, that information application is now in three parts. So you have one that's all about processes and procedures, and that's really important for someone, like I said, who has never done it before, may never do it again, or it's their first time in general with Montgomery County. The packet two is the actual application and the minimum code requirements they have to submit to us. And then packet three is for any of the conditional zonings, like we're talking about tonight, that may want to do proffers. It's a proffer statement form, it walks, it's our template, and it talks to them about what type of proffers that the county would be looking for, as far as how they're formatted, not the actual items the proffers are in. And this graphic here, we used a lot with the commission to make sure that we showed that even though the process has a lot more days and a lot more text related to reviews, as long as the applicant is making timely resubmittals to any changes, ultimately, this graphic shows that the process that we do now versus what would be in place for conditional zoning after, if this were adopted, is only two weeks longer. And even though it's only two weeks, the commission did grapple with that quite a bit because they felt like they had concern over the process taking longer. However, we talked to several different applicants, we talked to several different firms that represent applicants, and they felt really good about having those numbers in place and having a set, basically, four months in place versus not knowing some, you know, uncertainty there because time's money on applications. So if they knew they could plan and budget for four months, they felt pretty good about that. So this sort of, just kind of lays out in a graphic, in a timeline, what you have in text there as far as the days. The commission, as I mentioned, did hold their hearing December 12th, 2018, and all the commissioners that were present ultimately did vote in favor of recommending you approve this text, and that did not come, again, easily because several commissioners were concerned about this adding additional time. But ultimately, the more questions they had, staff was able to really assure them that it was guided towards us being able to help applicants and make the process smoother. So that's all I have for you tonight. If you have any questions for me, I'm glad to take them before you open the hearing.
Any more hearing questions?
I just have one comment, but no questions.
Go ahead.
I just, especially recording of the proffers, I think is an important thing so the public can find them, and I think that's a really good addition, and helps with transparency issues as well, and make sure that folks can go back and say, wait a minute, here it is, it's recorded, you're supposed to do this. And I think that's a really good addition.
Supervisor, move on.
Go ahead. This document's, you know, pretty big. I'm sure you know it a lot better than I do. Wherein it is the community meetings reference?
Do not have the text in front of me. I am not, sir, I believe that the community meeting information is on the application and not in the text because it's not a code requirement. It's in the packet of application materials. And it basically says if there is an interest in doing one on their own, that we will assist them with providing addresses through our GIS system once they identify the targeted area. And that, we kind of left it as it's an option. Also, it's worth pointing out, this process is a little bit different for our commission, and so, once we get it and it's out for agency review, the commission will actually have a work session. So in some parts of the county, community meeting is not really going to work out that well, so our more rural portions of the county outside our villages and things like that. So we'll actually be talking to the applicant about doing a mailing and inviting people to that actual work session, so they'll get to see the basic application and hear what the commission's saying, share any input at that point, and then the actual Planning Commission hearing isn't until the next month, so that gives them a little bit of time. So we sort of tried to work that into the process a little bit.
Is there anything that allows the surrounding neighbors to request a community meeting prior to the commission meeting?
There's nothing in our code or in state code that says that, although typically if neighboring, during a rezoning process, neighboring neighborhoods, communities, if they know about an application, we'll usually show an interest before we even see the application to learn more about it from the applicant. So we don't have it in place formally. I think that would really be up to the applicant at this point, if they wanted to do something prior to submittal.
Is there anything that we could encourage them to, if they were requested for a community meeting, that they hold one in their earliest convenience? I'm just asking.
Sure, yeah. I mean, we could definitely convey that as part of our application process to, you know, to let them know. We always encourage, actually, one of the things we cover in the pre-application meeting is, have you spoken to your neighbors, you know, have you done any outreach? Because we always do encourage that upfront. So we...
But it's not required?
It is not.
Right.
No. As I mentioned, in certain parts of the county, community meeting is going to be nearly impossible. I mean, you could go for miles and hit maybe three neighbors. So we really, we looked at codifying it, but honestly, it just didn't work out. But we certainly encourage applicants to do that upfront. And putting in the work session with the commission as a way for neighbors from far and wide, whether they're adjacent properties, to come in is, was sort of our idea of making it work, even though we don't have formal neighborhoods in some places.
I'm just, I'm sure you know that I'm thinking about Clay Street. The, after a little while, the neighbors definitely wanted to have community meetings and, you know, so that the Board of Supervisors meetings and the commission meetings didn't have to drag on as long as they did, what could be done, a lot of the comments and back and forth could be held in the community meetings. But if it's not required, you know, we'll get a lot of upset, potentially upset neighbors, you know, because they didn't have the opportunity to ask their questions and things like that. So if there's a way that we can encourage, highly encourage, the developers to, you know, invite the neighbors, if the neighbors request a community meeting, I would love to see that. And I understand, you know, most of the county doesn't even remotely look like Clay Street at all.
Sure. In my experience, if neighbors show an interest, usually an applicant finds a way to meet either run on one or in some sort of meeting. That's my experience most of the time.
But didn't, wasn't there a community meeting at Bull and Bones on the Clay Street?
There was, but...
And then, I know that from some of the emails I reviewed, the developer did reach out, and I guess somebody did advise the folks on Clay Street not to meet with the developers, and they refused to meet with them.
That was at the beginning, and then after they realized how it was going to be of their benefit, that's when we had the Bull and Bones meeting, but our meetings and the commission meetings were happening too quick to be able to actually get another second meeting, which would have been beneficial. We just couldn't make the dates happen, so. So, I mean, if the community knows this at the first commission meeting, they have the second commission meeting, our first one, you know, there's a lot of time that they could have several, if not before, like the developers actually wanted to have, so.
Is that all yours?
Yes, thank you.
Supervisor, begin.
I was just going to ask, so this can go into effect, and then if there are any problems with it, it can be reviewed or brought back to look at?
Sure.
You know, as we do with all the different planning, okay.
Yeah. I will say, we spend a lot of time running the numbers because it's very difficult to put the numbers in place and then know that you'll be able to meet advertising deadlines and things like that, especially because depending on the month, commission could meet third Wednesday, and it can really be problematic, but certainly, we know going into it that, you know, that could need to be adjusted.
Thank you.
Do you need more questions?
Just a quick one. Is there a process or a requirement for notifying neighbors if a rezoning application is sent to them?
There is. There's a formal process through 15.22204 that state code of Virginia requires adjacent property notifications, and that's immediately adjacent, across the road, across the creek. It specifies how that notice has to go, and it goes via mail to all the adjacent property owners.
What step of the process, like on your flow chart, where would the adjacent property notification occur?
So this is a little different than our current process. By code, that notice has to be in everyone's hand around the same time the notice goes in the paper, which has to be no more than 21 days before and no less than seven days before. So there's a window in there where it has to be in everyone's mailbox.
Okay, thank you.
Do you need more questions? On the ordinance amendment, chapter 10, zoning, section 10-54, there's no one signed up, but if anybody in the audience would like to stand up and address the board, please come forward, you have five minutes. State your name and your address, please. Seeing no one, we'll close this public. Moving to the next one. Special use permit.
This one has pictures in it.
Well, I thought the graphs were, your graphs were good, and that last one, they were good.
Okay. Tonight, we are going to be reviewing a special use permit request by Craig Bottashead Electric Cooperative. It is for a, special use permit for public utility substation for electricity. So you guys did a recent substation for gas, this is electricity. It's located here off of Bradshaw Road in the eastern portion of the county. This sort of gives you an aerial, you can see Bradshaw Road here, and then the shape of the parcel that is owned by Craig Bottashead. This gives you a look at the comp plan map, shows you the parcel layout along Bradshaw Road, and then this map also identifies the basic outline of the MVP pipeline, which is located just to the south. We provided that in your information because if you drove past, the power lines go through there, the easement, we'll show that on another parcel, so it would kind of give you guys a sense of the location there. This is the zoning and tax, zoning map. You can see it's zone day one, and there's some rural residential in the vicinity also. This shows the topography of the site, and then shows that easement, I was just mentioning, this is the power easement that exists. And this shows you the concept, so the access would still be here off of Bradshaw, would go up to the substation. You can see there's actually two separate, this is the Craig Bottashead layout that you had in your packet, hopefully you're able to zoom in and get a sense of that. They also had some elevations of what the technology looks like, and this is actually for AEP, they're co-located on the site with them. And this gives you a sense of what that looks like coming off of Bradshaw, and then looking from the bridge. So the request is to construct the substation. Currently, this portion of Montgomery County is served by Craig Bottashead, but the closest substation is actually in Bottashead County. They're looking to do this and have been for some time, they purchased the property some time ago based on power outages and some quality issues that their customers were seeing. If approved, it has to apply with all of Montgomery County zoning regulations, including a full-site plan, and they are allowed, substations are allowed in our A1 district by SGP. So the entrance that I showed you, VDOT has indicated would be acceptable. There's not employees and staff going in and out of here very much, so it's sort of a standard civil entrance that they look at, and they have already analyzed that. There's no water sewer needed, there's obviously no children generated. Because this is part of the public utility, DEQ actually does the review of the stormwater and ENS, and so we've already had some initial conversations with them. And while a portion of the property is located in the floodway... And while a portion of the property is located in the floodway, no part of the development is actually located in the floodplain. So, this is the comp plan map again for you, and basically, we look at consistency with the comp plan, policy statement wise. This is really resolving those infrastructure issues. I mean, I think we heard both from the applicant and then at the commission meeting, we had one of the customers come and talk about it. It's also providing that orderly extension of electric and improving general quality of life. I think we can all agree when you're without power, it's pretty unpleasant, so. The commission did their 2232 review, and while it was not anticipated at the time that there'd be a substation here, it is supported by those policy statements that I just shared with you. We find it's an important link in the chain of energy distribution, especially for this part of the county that we've learned has experienced significant outage issues. It was purchased by Craig Bottotat Electric in 2012. They've been working on this for some time. The packet of information that was provided to as part of their application talks about what an investment in infrastructure they are really looking at doing, and it also, it talks a little bit about their partnership with AEP on this site. It's surrounded by larger tracts of land. The screening and the site, the site will not be readily noticeable. It kind of rises to the west. It's on the back portion of the parcel. They're retaining as much of the tree line as possible, and they'll also have to do a buffer yard as part of the site plan. There's very limited light. The engineers are here, if you have any questions related to lighting, and very limited noise is on the site. So, the commission found that it was substantially in accord with the comp plan when they did their 2232 review, and recommended that the board consider approval of the substation. There were two conditions. One was general conformance with that site plan that was provided, that showed the layout, and also that construction activities be limited between 7 and 7. The commission voted unanimously in favor. As I mentioned, we had one member of the public speak. She spoke in favor as a longtime customer along North Fork, and then one of our commissioners is also a Craig Bottotat customer, and he was pretty pleased to hear that there may be less power outages in his future, too. And that's all I have for you. Both the applicants from Craig Bottotat, AEP, and their agent, Steve Simmons from Balzer, are here, if you have any technical questions.
Is there any questions? Seeing no questions, we'll open it up to the public.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Ayer, and I'm manager of distribution services for Craig Bottotat. And I'm going to review that we have identified this site. It was identified in our last construction work plan, and we had a significant amount of outages. The distance from the existing substation is about 25 miles. So, circuit miles that cross over mountains and double-sided right away with trees on both sides, and it has created a lot of power quality issues, voltage issues at the end of line. So, we identified this site not only for location of where we were having issues, but also proximity to AEP's transmission line. Their transmission line is very redundant. It has multiple feeds coming in from two different locations. So, they're making a strong investment on their side also to interface with this substation site. We are looking at potentially picking up at first phase around 600 customers, and the second phase will keep, it'll still be under 1,000, but we'll have the potential to backfeed from this location back into Bottotat, Roanoke, and Craig Counties. So, it is, we are looking at the future with this substation. It's a strong investment for our cooperative, and we know that we need to identify, to actually correct this issue, and one way of correcting it would be constructing the substation at this particular site. Are there any questions?
Board, have any questions?
So, when I was, so when I was a kid, they were putting in a huge transmission line next to my house, you know, the big ones that go up, and you got one thing that cross and, I don't know, 100 feet high or something like that. So, I know down in the Shawzall area, this area, that's, I think that's the kind of transmission line that's going through, that you're going to try to drop down and get your power from. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, how big, how tall is your stuff?
Our stuff, we do not have anything within the station that exceeds, I believe, 40 feet, 45 feet. So, it's not high structures, but the AEP portion of it will be tapping into structures. I'm not sure exactly what the height elevations are on those structures.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? If this is approved, when do you plan to start?
As soon as the plans are approved. We have the transformer order. From that point on, land development and the rest of it, which would be the steel package for the substation, fencing ground grid, and coordination with AEP on their side. Immediate.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Now, we open this up to the public. Any individual speaker who wants to speak, please come forward, state your name and address. You have five minutes to speak on the public utility substation. Seeing none, we'll close this part of public session. Now, we're in a public address session. Is she done?
Yep.
That's it. We'll open the public address session. We'll have one name, Miss Susan Miller. Please step forward, state your name and address.
My name is Susan Miller. I live at 3065 Mud Pike Road in the Reiner area. There are two things I want to speak briefly about, both that are near and dear to my heart. One is McKee, the Montgomery County Emergency Assistance Program. We had our board meeting today, and just to let you know, what we're doing for you is, we assisted 150 people in the month of December with electricity bills. We don't pay the sign-up connection fee. We don't pay penalties. We pay the bill, and we're seeing a huge increase in requests for help with electricity. We had an additional, roughly 150 people who requested food from the 1st of November through the end of December, even with the Christmas store, and they're receiving food through the Christmas store. We had 19 requests in December for kerosene and heating oil, but our biggest concern, I think, is food and making sure that there's enough food around there. We are in our, it's three and a half years since we've been in the building that we are purchasing at 308 West Main Street in November, three years ago. We had a $300,000 mortgage. We are down under $70,000 now to pay the mortgage off, so it will be paid. But the money we use to pay that mortgage comes from donations. It comes from the sale of items in the thrift store. I encourage all of you to come and buy. That money is well-spent when the mortgage is paid. When we're doubling our payments right now to $3,400 and whatever a month, when that mortgage is paid, that additional money will go into assistance for people in Montgomery County. Last week, we had one request from a federal employee who was furloughed, who worked in Roanoke and lived in Montgomery County for food, and even though we had no requirements for whether or not we could or not, we did, because we felt that was necessary to keep everybody happy. So, that's enough for McKee. Other than, there is a line item in your budget that is for McKee. Please, please, keep that line item in there. That's essentially the pay that community action receives for the woman who works for community action and processes everything that we do. Secondly, I'm chair of the Montgomery County Parks and Rec Commission, and I want to fully support and endorse what will be presented to you later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no, no one else signed up. If you'd like to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close public address. Addendum.
No, sir.
No addendum for this evening. Consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Third. I'll let Daryl do it.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, you call her own, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fizikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven O's.
Thank you. Is there a motion to go into work session?
Salute.
Second.
Madam Secretary, you call her own, please.
Just a second. Calm down. I pull over. Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fizikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven O's.
Thank you. End of work session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, we have representatives from Gay and Neal, John Neal and Trevor Kimsey coming forward this evening to provide you with an overview of the work that they've been doing on the county's behalf in relation to the Eastern Montgomery-Auburn area master plan for parks. So, John, thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we're live here. Ready to go. Chairman King, members of the board, appreciate your time tonight. Thank you all for allowing us to be here. We do have myself, John Neal, and President of Gay Neal, as well as Trevor Kimsey and Matt Thomason from our office, and also Mr. Cole and Ms. Miller from the Parks and Rec Commission, and I saw Brad from the department back there, as well as our fearless leader, Mitchell.
I always wondered why Brad and Mitchell were sitting so far apart. I didn't know if...
But, we're going to give you a quick review of the project as a whole, and then kind of get into the details. Specifically, your team was Montgomery County, Gay and Neal, I was the project team leader, and we had a good group working with us. Trevor, specifically on recreation athletics. Matt Thomason and OWPR was our architectural partner for the buildings and kind of schematic designs that you're going to see on the buildings. And then, we also had Joe Design Group helping us with some 3D renderings. Just a quick overview of the agenda tonight. We'll talk a little bit about that process, go through that pretty quickly, walk through Creed Fields down in Elston, then walk through Auburn Park, and then any questions or concerns you have. So, looking at the process, we took it really from 30,000 feet. It was truly a team effort as we worked through this with the Parks and Rec Commission, the county staff, the county Parks and Rec staff. We had those two public meetings, one in Auburn and one in Elston, that you all attended and you all held as a board supervisor group. I think we got a lot of good feedback at those meetings. We brought all that together, kind of drilled down to create the master plan that you're going to see tonight for both sites. So, I want to dive in. That was a very quick overview, so I want to dive in specifically to Creed Fields Park and show you kind of what we've got going on there. We did a lot of research and review of the site itself. One of the key things to know is that we've got the issue of the flood pathway coming through here. That was one of the things that informed our design, our master plan design quite a bit. We've got the PSA facility off to the page left here, and the existing softball fields that are already down there. We went through and created several concepts, and these were some of the ones that we saw at that public input session, and then we worked with staff on those to continue to refine these all the way down. We incorporated some community input. We had some critical priorities that we got from those input sessions. Bathroom facility and building being one of those, that came out first. Multipurpose fields, walking trails, playgrounds, baseball and softball fields, combination baseball and softball fields, picnic shelter or pavilion of some sort, so people could gather, they could have some events down there and things like that. Some of the less important things that we found out were preserving the existing baseball softball fields, specifically, a little bit because of the location, but also, most importantly, because of the floodwaters that come through there and end up creating a tremendous amount of work for your staff to maintain those because of the infield, some of the facilities that are there. An indoor building for rec programs, that was not a key, critical priority that we heard. And then, passive open space, believe it or not, that was not one of the priorities that we heard as part of the community input. There were some additional desired amenities, bleachers for the facilities that we're going to be designing, shade structures for the playground areas, so it's just not out there in the sun all the time, providing some shield, shielding from the sun for the kids on the playground. Combination football and soccer goals, a way to kind of save money and have something that would both support Little League football as well as recreation soccer, and then athletic field lighting and empowered lighting for the picnic shelters and pavilions. So, here's what we ended up with as we talked about that process, we've got that big wedge that would come down to the final master plan. What this master plan does is it specifically targets the flooding maintenance issues and the athletic density on the site. This is the site of the former school. We're all well aware. We're relocating the troubled diamond, the one diamond that, believe it or not, this diamond is the one that gets the most infield mix pulled out of it and has the most damage during flooding events. And then, the final of the three diamond fields and one multipurpose field over here, and we have a multipurpose field that we've kind of aligned to allow for that floodwaters to come through there. So, we've got it on an orientation that will allow that floodwaters to come through there and minimize the damage to the park. Approximately 200 spaces, 50 spaces per field. We've got the three fields, this one existing softball baseball field, and then facilities and trails, I'll get to that here, for a total price of 2.6 million. And one thing to keep in mind as I go through here, I'll come back to that, that price. But, I want to zoom in here and show you just a little bit of the key elements that maybe not, you may not be able to see when you're looking at the park as a whole. We have looked at very specifically, it's not just a kind of a base concept master plan. We did look at some specific details of serving the site with water and sewer, gravity sewer back to the right street, overhead, overhead power where it's at. So, we've gotten down into some of the details. When we're doing this master plan and trying to come up with a cost estimate for you all to make budget decisions on, we've done the detailed work to make sure that you have a real number. We do have, as part of that overall price, we do have a recommended phasing strategy to allow you to move into this park if you need to. Phase one being removing the diamond from the floodplain and replace it with a new diamond field up here on the side of the old school. Adding the new multipurpose field here, installing the majority of the parking, the bathrooms and the picnic shelters are pretty critically important, as well as the utilities and stormwater management. We've got to do that at the outset of the project. Those are those requirements. That phase one, we've worked up estimate for that as $2 million. And that is based on real work and real layout and real grading that we've done on the site. Phase two would add one more diamond field, the balance of the parking to support that field, and then adding one more picnic shelter and the asphalt walking trails that you can kind of see throughout the site here, looping around the baseball softball fields, down around this baseball softball field. And now, what it does is incorporates and connects the parking area to those fields, as well as gives local residents a place if they want to do some loop walking or exercise like that, they can get some benefit out of it. That would bring up another $700,000. And so, you maybe ask yourself, you said 2.6 million, then you said 2 million, then you said 700,000. Something's not adding up here, Mr. Neal. Part of that is, when we do things in phases, we do have an incremental cost that you pick up as part of that. So, that 2.6 million was for the whole park as a whole at the beginning, if you do it all as one project. If you do phase it, you are going to incur some additional costs. The buildings, restrooms, picnic shelter, multi-use, we do have some specific concepts for those that we've developed, and you can see them here, and I think you've got copies of those. of those. The floor plans and the cost estimates developed by our architectural partner, OWPR, who incorporate split face block and concrete slabs. So, trying to keep the budget in line to make it feasible to build, but also provide a decent facility versus porta-johns where you may see in some other areas. Comparable in size and scope, if you're familiar with the buildings at Nellie's Cave Park, Mead County Park, kind of similar to that design style and amenities. So, into the number, digging into the number, just to kind of show you that we've pulled some of these things out, the 2.6 million, that is based on, like I said, that real layout. We've done specific estimates from the topography that we have of the earthwork, demolition, erosion and sediment control, all those details that would be incorporated into a site plan. We're not kind of saying, hey, one field is about $500,000, so we put $500,000 there. We did a specific layout for the overall site and looked at real costs and real estimates that we've got access to. This does include, and you're going through this list, this does include all the soft costs as well that you pick up as far as design and all those types of things. That's, this is an all-in number. So, there are some opportunities to pull some, to deduct out of this base price if you're thinking about it, like site lighting. If you decide not to do that, you'd save about $70,000. The bathrooms, $480,000, that's those buildings and facilities and the water and sewer that comes along with it. Playground shade structures, $15,000. And I'm just highlighting a few of these, you can go through and look at them in detail. So, I ran through that pretty quickly, which was my intention. Certainly happy to answer any question on this project, or Trevor Kimsey's gonna come up and talk about Elston, Auburn, Reiner.
You having questions?
I do.
All right, go ready.
Yes, sir.
If it was to be done in two phases, would phase one cover all the earthwork, all the grading?
Yes, sir. Other than the fine grading that you would see for the field itself. So, we'd get everything close, but then when you go to phase two, you do have fine grading for the ball field and some of the parking, the stone for the parking lot, that's not included, but typically that's included in a grading number when we estimate. So, it'd be kind of the bulk grading to get things prepped.
Okay. And the areas that are prone to flooding, what do you put down there to mitigate any damage to the football soccer field?
So, one of the things, the opportunity that we do, put in here and go back. So, a multipurpose field such as this is graded, crowned, left to right. So, we're running with the flow of the water, and we've got the pavement there. The biggest damage that typically comes from that flooding is when it transports the material that was on the infield. So, obviously, you're gonna have some flooding issues, but typically on a grass field like that, it's gonna be pretty minimal.
Okay.
Yeah, the expense that we've run into with that existing field that's there is it takes all that infield, the water takes the infield material out, and then Mitchell and his guys have to go back in and spend a lot of time and considerable money building that back. With this design, in essence, if you have a flood, it's just running across grass, and so.
And we talked with the staff specifically. Typically, they have a little bit of notice before they have some type of event, they'd be able to go there and pull those combo goals and field goals out of the way so that they didn't take any debris or anything like that that would come through there.
And some of the other plans, you had the picnic shelters and I don't know if there was playground equipment there or not, in that, in your big schematic there, it would have been in the lower left-hand side. Did you just give up on that, or was that just too much?
I think.
But it was along the river?
Mm-hmm. Couple of things. Oh, you mean over here?
Yes.
I think one of the things is that having the facilities, the playground and the bathrooms close to the parking was ideal. As we went through the research, the boundary line down here on this property, there's an adjacent farm, and over the years, the river has moved, and so that property is actually, some of that property is owned by an adjacent farmer.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
Will there be a fence around the field so when the ball field, bottom right, there's that road right there so that balls don't go into the road, or they're going into the road?
Oh, we have an outfield fence there. So, I think there would be an occasion if somebody hits a big home run, that this might go over that fence, yes, ma'am.
There is the hope. For the multipurpose field, is that gonna be built up to potentially reduce the amount of flooding, you know? Is it gonna be raised?
It would not really be raised all that much because we do have to maintain the ability for the floodwaters to go through there. If we were to build it up too much, we then push that water somewhere else. And so, we're not really allowed to do that.
And then the bottom field in the upper left-hand corner, that's just gonna get washed away like it has been, right?
Well, this field is actually higher, so what happens is.
So, the flood goes between those two fields?
Yes, ma'am.
That's right, with the arrows and stuff.
Yeah. Right, this whole area here is kind of higher, and so that water comes through here.
Right across that existing field.
Okay. And there are no basketball courts or volleyball courts?
No, ma'am.
Is that correct? Great, that's it.
No more questions?
Just a quick one. Would there be an opportunity for solar power to be used to power the facilities there?
I think there's always that opportunity on, probably on something like this, I think, I don't know. I think sometimes your costs are gonna outweigh your benefits because you have a relatively minimal load.
Right.
But you're gonna, so it's gonna take a really, really, really long time for the cost of the facilities that you put in there, solar cells, that's doing the lights and things.
I feared you would say that. Thank you.
Bless your heart.
Gonna ask.
No more questions?
No.
Move to the next.
All right, we'll move on to all of them. And all that, Trevor.
All right, thank you. Again, Trevor Kimsey from Mr. Shepherd's district, but I'm excited to share with you what we've been looking at Auburn. I think it's a culmination of all the feedback we got and working through with the staff and concepts. Again, we began by just walking through some of the low-line areas and the ridges and trying to understand the terrain, took these concepts to the public process, got some real good feedback from the public about those. Using those forums and the feedback and the post-it notes and everything else, we kind of summarized here some of the critical priorities, the trails, bathroom facilities, picnic shelters, pavilions, and then baseball and softball. So, something to remember here is that the feedback, and you all were there that night, but most of the feedback we got sort of said, yeah, well, they were pretty passionate about diamonds, any of some baseball softball diamonds. But the reason maybe I think you see one, two, and three the way they are is that those weren't really highlighted at that first phase of the concepts we presented. So, the message we got that night was diamonds are maybe the right program, but don't forget the rest. Make this a nice park for everybody else who isn't just playing on that ball field. So, that was the takeaway, that's what you see here. And then again, some, not unimportant, but some of the lesser priorities that, you know, that again, the idea of preserving a large quantity of this park for passive open spaces didn't come out as a high priority, nor when we probed about outdoor fitness stations or something, not a lot of strong feedback for that. Very similar, people looking for, again, some of these support things, some of the things that would actually round out the park besides just the ball fields themselves. Same list as we saw before. And again, wanted to highlight, there was some push for hey, consider and make room for at least on these parks, room for, some people were seeking sort of an indoor building for rec programming opportunities. That was one of the floor plans we developed as part of the concept plan. So, it's on the list, it's something to consider at some point, and certainly this park, unlike the previous park, this park has the elbow room to accomplish that someday if the fiscal elbow room was ever present. So, the final concept plan to present to you tonight, really, we tried to utilize this property, the whole property. That includes being sensitive and aware of the fire station needs that are here, but also trying to make the most out of the county's investment that you've got in this property and the opportunities here for this region. Clearly, diamonds were the higher priority, but we did not abandon the idea of the rectangles, the multipurpose fields, we provided for that as well. And again, we wanted to make sure this concept carried forward the idea of really addressing the park out with the trails and the amenities that I think make for a park a place for both the kids on the field and the siblings and the parents, or just the other folks outside of that 8 to 18 demographic who come to the park and want to take a walk in the evening. Looking at that closer up, we have initially some of the concepts. These diamonds were a lot closer out the road, they pushed a lot harder up against the edge of the fire station. So, and hearing some of the feedback about those concerns, we pushed those back into the side a bit further and developed parking packaged up with these fields. And then you'll see moving back, more parking associated with some of these next phase. And then the rear of the property kind of filled in out of here and rolling up into this back portion of the property. Each one has some stormwater provisions made for it and thoughts given how it comes together. If you were to tackle this whole park, and that can be a shocking number, if you were to tackle this whole park out of the gates all at once, the estimate was $6.8 million. Wanted to let you know that we didn't do this just on a, and John already mentioned, this wasn't just a dollars per acre, throw a number at it on a piece of paper, but developed 3D models, examined how these things would actually lay out, confirmed that it's both feasible, and then use that to inform our earthwork numbers so we actually could think through phasing implications and earthwork quantities when we're building out these estimates. And we also did think through the utilities, for example, coming out, crossing over Route 8 to get to the water on the other side, running gravity sewer back around to the pump station that's gone in and out, recently installed pump station for the fire station. And that, there's even money in the budget for an upgrade to that, to make that pump station serve the need for both, and even thoughts for the overhead power and stormwater. So, kind of a fully thought-out master plan of all those items. Looking at the phasing implications, and we really did think this through and packaged the first two things. There's one thing that's kind of almost missing that you might not notice, but it has a big bearing on the cost here. It's the idea of loading this first package with not only two diamonds and the parking that needs to serve that, but also providing some of those first set of structures and shelters, so bathroom facility, picnic pavilion, playground structures, it's all the utilities serving all of those. And then last, or maybe rather first, and not least, is the need, once you get out here, there is the need for, on Route 8, left turn lane. There will be a requirement for a left turn lane and probably a right turn lane as well. The left for sure, so that, and it has everything to do with just the opposing traffic volumes, not so much what you're generating, but more about what's already on the roadway and turning across that. That's a significant amount of money. You're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars in the right of way before you get anywhere close to one of your ball fields. So, that's driving some of the front-end investment. It creates sort of a larger threshold to get over and into the site, but that has not been overlooked or ignored. But at any rate, the phase one, the packaged stuff and recommended, was this layout here, and that was, brings in just under $4 million. And then looking ahead, phase two kind of picks up in that sweep around in the next round of parking, another diamond and a multipurpose field, the stormwater associated with that, another picnic pavilion. We're not stretching utilities up to the top here, this is just more picnic and playground shelter. And of course, phase three then makes logical sense. It wraps around and finishes out this piece of the park. The earthwork implications, we would actually, to build phase one, you'd actually be pulling some of the material off of phase two, which actually helps, it moves a little bit of the money out of phase two's earthwork into phase one, but the earthwork, to your question earlier, on this project, given the substantial nature of it, we've tried to limit the earthwork to each phase, at least enough to accomplish it. So, phase one will accomplish all of its own earthwork and part of the cut out of phase two. Phase two will finish its own earthwork, and phase three really is a standalone set of earthwork across this drainage bottom here you sweep over, and all of this works itself out separately. The full report provided has sort of a breakdown of all these costs and all these things that we just gave you that first phase tonight. But now, one of the big issues I wanted to just hit and resolve, because it's very important to discuss this part, and it's very important that we heard in the public feedback, and it didn't go ignored, it was thought through, is this proximity, the proximity of sharing this piece of land with the fire station. We know that's a sensitive issue, there's been partnerships in the past that have stepped on toes, and it's just, it's something that needs thought. One has to really think through how you're gonna share this, it's like siblings sharing a bedroom. With that in mind, I'm gonna take you through a few different graphics. If we had all the time and money and budget in the world, we could do a fly-through and a beautiful rendering. This is just a simple set of graphics, help show you how we believe this has been mitigated and to alleviate some of the concerns. So, if we cut a section, and I picked a section here mainly because this takes us up from the parking and really the spectator area. This is where the people are crowding around and doing their thing, they're looking to park and actually sit to watch games and visit, and cut a section through the field out here to the fire station. Wanted to show you what that would look like, so I know you can't read this from there, so we'll blow it up. I'm gonna take you first to see the left-hand part of the section and then the right. Again, it's starting the way out here in the parking lot, but a parking lot and a concrete walk and the plaza behind home plate, that kind of bleacher area. And then you're dealing with the whole softball field, 225 feet from home plate to the outfield fence, so that's more like, you know, 250 feet across the field. And then, and this is where it's really important, after the outfield fence, we've got a little bit of shelf thought through in the grading process, just for maintenance around the outside of the fence, any ball field, you wanna be able to drive around, maintain your lights and fencing. And then a drop-down slope, and that's important because this isn't just a casual flat site, there's a drop-down slope there. You can see anywhere from seven to eight feet across this section. Then you finally come to, and that's over 62 foot from the outfield fence now to the outer drive loop of the fire station. It's 215 feet from that outfield fence over to the very corner of the fire station. So, let me show you a couple more renderings because I wanna help understand. So, this is just how this, a simple, very crude, but a basic diagram, looking at the site. We're gonna drop down to this isometric rendering, and I kind of suggested here this idea that, and there's a lot of ways you could skin this cap. You could put a lot of trees all on the back slope of the baseball softball field and really dress that out. You could do it with a fence. Matt reminded me just a minute ago, all these cost estimates, we actually have sort of a perimeter fencing budget item in here, assuming there'd be some sort of perimeter fencing built around these facilities. But for this one, I suggested, what if you just ran trees sort of as a perimeter around the fire station, sort of celebrate that boundary and define that boundary really well? Boundaries make good neighbors, right? So, with that idea, you see here that the ball field's setting up, there's this fill slope from the ball field pushing out, and then you drop down, and there's even cut slopes to drop down into the fire station, which is set down in here. And where the people are parking, and there's ample parking, to make sure that this is not an under-park facility. That's one of your first problems, as soon as you set out a master plan, it doesn't park the facilities you have, then they go everywhere. You know, you can't bring them back in, you can't fix that later. So, the master plan's given sufficient parking so that we have the ability to park people closest to where they're trying to get in the first place. That solves a lot of your problems. And then we've planned for those restroom facilities to be right here, connected by the sidewalk, down from the parking and the main spectator areas. Again, trying to really put the draw that you want to be here or here and really nowhere else. There's no casual walkway that would cut across the open property to get over here. Looking at that, I drop down now to this sort of street, Route 8 looking in, the ball field actually sits up here. You could imagine this row of Evergreens screening that, or if now we move ourselves up to the fire station road, you start to see the softball field contour sitting here. And again, sort of this, an idea of just a boundary, it's a separate property at a good distance away. Sitting behind home plate, right, the spectator area watching the game, not Not that there is a way to cut straight across the field all the way there and make that 250 plus another 215-foot hike. So you're talking about a long way around. But you start to see the fire station looks like an adjacent property over there, not a convenient place to go and park your car and use the restroom. Again, just another look at that from the backside, seeing that proximity to the restrooms as opposed to this fire station that feels pretty remote from where we're parking and drawing the people. And finally, if you're at the fire station looking back up there, in this idea, you can have a fenced row of trees and the ballfield's well beyond. So again, just wanted to make that point that it's, is there a perfect solution? No. But is there a way to thoughtfully plan for it? Yes, and we think we've done that, not just with the idea of trees or fence, but also with, starting by a plan that gives you a lot of Auburn and a plan that gives you enough parking so that then you really haven't created the nuisance conditions that set up one of those frustrating partnerships on the site. All right, I'll move on. So the cost, as I already told you, $6.8 million. That is in 2019. As you all know, doing projects of your own, last 18 months, 24 months, things have been escalating. It's been a challenging market, but things are going up, and then maybe they'll stabilize out again. But that's something to consider as you plan. And again, I won't belabor the points, but we did, as John's made a great point, that we did not throw a dollars per acre cost to this. We kind of really thought it through and developed a layout and have the sufficient contingencies in there for the adjusting things that will happen as you go through design. And again, we are not going to sit here tonight and play a round robin game of what ifs, but we wanted you to see that if there's a funding available, but you need to start playing the game of, well, then how do we back down and get there? There are opportunities, and this is information that's available and you're deliverable that we have to use. So there are ways to play that what if game and back some things down. Every project comes with hard choices, and we're trying to help set a menu before you so you can make some of those choices. That brings us to the end of that project, and I'll just put them both up there again for discussion, questions about Auburn's future park master plan, or back to Creed Fields in Elston.
Any questions?
Do you have Phase 2 and 3 costs for the future Auburn Park?
Yes, we do. It was in, it's in, it's in the deliverable. I don't have that number now. If you need it tonight, I kind of felt like that after some of these numbers, we probably wouldn't be chewing on the rest, but may have jumped the conclusions there. We just gave you that Phase 1 or the whole thing.
And then if you could go, well, you can see it there in the Auburn Park plan up in the top left. Where does that walking trail go? Does it connect to the neighborhood behind?
Yeah, the idea, and that's more suggestive than anything, this is closely phase 2. It's not been built yet. What you see here, this is the plot plan and layout of the closely phase 2 that's actually about forthcoming. But the idea was, these two are adjacent. They have some of their own walking trail plans and thoughts within their neighborhood, although that's already kind of approved and getting rolling. We wanted to suggest, and everybody in public feedback really liked the idea of, let's make some way to get these connected together. I mean, one of the best ways to activate a park like this is to connect it into neighborhoods like that where you don't have to send kids back out to Route 8. If we can plug these two together, you'll get, really activate this park and bring it to life.
Thank you.
And it's sufficiently far away that I don't think anybody's going to park over there and drive it. I know where these same questions go, right?
Somewhere along the line, I heard that there was some consideration of a heliport for the fire station, or no? No comment I hear. What is the total number of parking spaces for the whole Auburn development?
Probably listed on my previous slide. I think there is about 100 here, 120 up there, and I think more than 100, 120 here. Was it 240, 340? Coming in there with 340. We're trying to, the goal is to really hit 50 to 75 spaces per field. 50 is probably a good target, goal for recreation fields. That's why you see sort of two fields here, 100 spaces. Trying to get 50 per field. If you're going for real tournament play, real hardcore, big tournament stuff, you really probably need to be up towards 75 parks per field.
And then, there's a lot of...
Yeah, so 340, yes.
Okay, there's a lot of space between, in the upper right-hand corner.
Yeah, great. So although nobody said, hey, we want passive open spaces, a high priority, the terrain did. The terrain said, yes, this is where everything, it drops down into a big low area. So we need stormwater management back in this area, so it's a logical place for it. And the cost, and again, we really couldn't start putting another field back in here. So we didn't do superfluous earthwork to really level that out. So we've left that as sort of just natural terrain. And it could be, and there's, once you have this thing in motion, you can really dress it up in any number of ways. You could take a disc golf course, not to replace what you already have, but very inexpensively just put up the posts, cages, and lay out through some of these areas and just create a nice play around place in here.
Perhaps I didn't see the line item for how much those turning lanes were going to cost. How much?
How much do we have in there, Matt?
Three hundred thousand.
Yeah, a little over $300,000.
For both turning lanes?
Yeah, for the turning lane improvements. It's just, it gets, you know, and it's something to, you know, at a master plan level, we can't solve all those questions, but there will be discussion needing to be had right of way and those kind of issues. As we've wrestled through this, further down Route 8 with another client, you start trying to do that, and you got to start talking to your neighbors.
There might be some opportunities to partner with VDOT with some of their programs too, to address that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
How many total acres again is this?
Is this 28-acre park? I think this is a 28-acre park.
So in the...
Yeah, so you're looking at two different scales, just so you know. When we were printing out Harcourt, you would have seen this thing printed out at 100 scale. It was on a large 22 by 34. This one's on 11 by 17 at the same scale, but graphically tonight, yeah, they're very different sized parks.
And so when you do a 20-acre facility, you need three sets of bathrooms and shelters?
No, what we've done is, the bathroom is only here.
Okay.
And what we have assumed is that there'd be picnic shelters without bathrooms, but shelter and playground up in here. And then we've got shelter here, you know, at that point. When you get to Phase 3, if you want to add more playgrounds, there's room to do that as well. But that was kind of the basis of what we built out here. But now bathrooms and utilities sort of core right in the middle, trying to serve all the needs. Because that gets expensive. Just even getting back across the bottom lane and back over here, we've probably created a need for a pump station. You couldn't drain it by gravity back to where we're at. So strategically located instead of plumbing utility right in the middle.
And then lastly, you had a line item of $1.3 million, and part of that was demolition. What are you demolishing? I mean, it's a demo. I don't know what that means. I think that means demolition.
More clearing and rubbing.
Yeah.
What's that?
Clearing and rubbing, some of that site, stripping tops and all those kinds of things.
What is that money to start with?
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a discussion item for after we finish this portion that I'd like to bring up.
Okay, no more questions. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you all again for the privilege of getting to this. We get pretty excited about this, and hopefully it's helpful to move in some things forward as parts of the county.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to have a work session. She wants to talk in a work session. If it's about the parks, she can do it.
Yeah, it's about the parks. And I just wanted to throw this out here for all of you guys to consider. We've got some big numbers that have come in front of us tonight. And as your liaison to the Parks and Recreation Commission, I thought it my duty to make sure everybody's aware of where we are financially. I asked for Carol's help in preparing this. Currently, we have set aside $906,528. That's an account for the Eastmont and Auburn Parks. So that one again is 906-528. And then there's a second account that we have for park revitalization. That account has a balance of $111,330. Annually, we are setting aside $390,000 into the capital account. And I'm assuming, Carol, that this is 390 that we're setting aside specifically for parks and, okay. And then, so what I asked Carol was, understanding that our current rate of savings is $390,000 a year, and the combination of monies that we have available, how long would it take for us to save the money to pay for these parks? You know, we're talking about 2019 prices. It would take us 32 years, I'm sorry, 22 years to save for full buildout of both of these parks. So as we're having a discussion surrounding the parks and thinking about how we're going to create opportunities for parks in Montgomery County in the future, it's clear that we're not saving at a rate that we need to be saving at to actually truly expand the parks that we have now. So I just want all of you guys to think about that, because, you know, now we've got these really great plans. It's going to be difficult to get from where we are today to actual building of these parks if we want to pay cash for them. Looks like definitely something that would need financing or 22 years before we could get there.
Another thing that we could look at doing, and we've got to look at our carryover money, and whether we want to allocate some monies from that to address our needs. You know, we gave the schools, and we had some extra unallocated funds, and we lived up to these, the board's obligations on those. In my mind, I'd like to see from the staff, an idea of where those carryover funds are at this point in time, and look at, maybe at our extended work session here in a few weeks, to talk about our priorities. You know, we've talked about the Shawsville Rescue Squad, but also these two parks on how to address it. And so I'd like to have those numbers, if possible, going into that extended work session so we could talk about how we're going to allocate those funds and then our goals for the year.
Definitely, thanks.
And that's exactly what I was going to say, is the whole purpose of tonight was to let you see the results of those public input sessions and the great work that Gay and Neil have done pulling it together. Tonight was not about making any decisions. It was to provide you with that information. So as we start heading into budget season, as we have discussion about other capital projects that we'll be talking about as we move into the budget, just so you'll have a frame of reference as to how to help set priorities going forward, so.
I'd like to second April's thoughts on the parks in general. I've been thinking a lot about it myself, and it's definitely a quality of life issue. And when you look at how the county's expanding, I know Reiner has grown quite a bit, a lot of homes out there that would definitely make use of those facilities. You know, when you have young kids, you want them to be physically active, you want them to get involved in sports. They learn so much from sports besides just working with others, the camaraderie. I mean, all of it put together is really healthy for our kids. So we can't, we can't use it as the last place we spend our money. We really need to pay attention to it, and the way these plans have been laid out, it looks like we could phase some of these things in as we go too, so that we would actually be making progress in giving our citizens something and not just the promise, hey, 15 years from now, we're going to do this. You know, we can actually start working on it. So I think it's very important that we look at it.
Well, thanks for saying that and bringing up that it's a quality of life issue, because I do truly agree with that. As a proud soccer mom, I've made many friends walking on the walking trails around ballfields. And so I think it's good, not only for the kids, but for everybody in the community to have access to facilities like that. I think it strengthens communities. So I appreciate your point.
Any more discussion?
No more discussion. We'll come out of work session. Need a motion?
Some move.
Or second. Second. Madam Secretary, your call roll please.
Mr. Shepherd?
Hi.
Mr. Tuck?
Hi.
Mrs. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Chair Keen?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Mr. Chair, if I could, under the next item of new business, we have the two ordinances related to the public hearings tonight. We went ahead and were proactive and have these on the agenda should the board want to move forward based on the public hearings, but that's at your discretion, so.
Is there a motion to move these forward?
I'd make that motion.
I'd second.
Any more discussion?
Is it just a motion to move them forward individually?
Yeah.
I talked to Marty about some grammar, spelling, and capitalization and stuff like that, and I'll forward them to him otherwise.
We have to go to the second.
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll move the first one forward then.
Under new business, the zoning ordinance amendment, Chapter 10, Section 5-54. Madam Secretary, your call roll please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Don't we have to separate this, and we just opened it for both?
As I took it as for the first one.
So you opened it for the first?
First, is this what, that was, that was the motion, not, you're absolutely right. It's the one at a time.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to ask.
Yes, for the zoning ordinance.
I was like, what else need?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Keen?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Number two, special use permit, create volatile electric corporate.
Some move.
Second.
Madam Secretary, your call roll please.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Chair Keen?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Yep.
County reports. No report. County administrator.
I'll use his time. I won't be long. We do have just a few things I wanted to bring to you tonight. You probably could get the notice, if you didn't see it today, the Welton Cooper Center released their population estimate for cities and counties as of July 1, 2018, 99,433.
What's that close?
Missed it by that much. And I'll be real candid with you, as I looked at that report, I, right around this county, we're not, we're over 100,000, but I don't tell the Welton Cooper Center what to do. So it's 99,433. That's a July 1, 18, so we'll wait till next January and see if we can...
I was so tired of it.
I thought, I just knew it. Soon as I saw it today, I looked, and I was like, err. We are watching the weather closely. As you may already be aware, the school systems in our area have closed tomorrow for the impending weather. We do think we're going to have some snow that can create some travel conditions tomorrow afternoon. So we were waiting to tomorrow afternoon to take a look at things, but schools are closed tomorrow. We'll certainly let you know if we have any changes to weather. And one thing I want to say while I'm on that topic is, when we take a look at whether to close offices early or delay opening, one of the biggest concerns I always have are employees, well, not Mitchell, but our, don't do that when I'm looking at you, are concerns for making sure our employees can get to work safely in the mornings, and then when they're here, I'm always very concerned about making sure they can get home safely. A close second to that, though, is making sure that citizens that come to these buildings don't risk themselves. There's a lot of concrete and asphalt around these buildings that get really slick really fast. And we've got a great general services crew building, and the grounds do a great job, but we've got a lot of real estate to cover when it starts coming out of the sky. And so I just felt I needed to say that because somebody said, well, you know, 20 years ago, the buildings never closed. Well, I can't speak to 20 years ago, but I don't want to get anybody hurt. That's the bottom line, as far as I'm concerned. Two last things, several offices will be in Richmond Wednesday afternoon through Friday. Two last things, several of us will be in Richmond Wednesday afternoon through Friday for the VACO Annual Legislative Day, meeting with our legislators. We've got a list, and we'll see if we can make any progress on that list. Also, I heard mentioned earlier, I was going to mention to you as well, please mark Friday evening, February 22nd, and Saturday, February 23rd, for the board's extended work session. Working on plans for that now, we'll get them out as we go, but that was a date that worked for everybody, so we look forward to having you as part of that. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Tuck.
Well, I was sad to hear about the Welton Cooper, that we were that close, but I do want to remind my fellow supervisors and some of you, well, I guess there was a couple of you that weren't on the board, but one of the things that we all agreed on was, once that we get to that level, we will no longer be providing supplements to our constitutional officers. And that would end that practice across the board. Now Hank back there is not getting a supplement, and we've stopped it at that point in time in our current, are frozen. But I am looking forward to that day because that was one of the things that we were able to agree on seven nothing, was that we didn't need to be providing those type of bonuses to folks who are making six figures. So I was sad that we're just a few hundred short to end that. The other thing is, I attended the fire and rescue meeting, and they're working through their budget process. I wanted to kind of give you an update of how they went through that process. There is going to be some additional funds requested. Blacksburg was requesting additional funds as far as fire. They're having a trailer that's going to be remodeled to have additional bathrooms for the burned building that's being constructed in Merrimack. In regards to the Elliston Fire, their air machine, that's the machine that's used to fill up their air tanks and the like, is very old. And it is, and initially, they said, look, we'll do it over a two-year span, we would like a $25,000 increase this year, and then a 25 next year, and then we'll pay for it. There was a group discussion, and while they were willing to wait over two years, the group decided you need a new air tank machine because they cannot get replacement parts for their air tank machine that's gotten that old. So that was roughly about a $47,000 ask and increase in regards to that. And then in regards to Reiner, there was an additional $5,000 requested, and fortunately, they're moving into a new fire station, which means it's a lot bigger and the utility bills are going to be a lot bigger. And so that was one of their requests. Blacksburg Rescue made an additional request of $2,900 to address inflation issues, as well as Long Shop Rescue asked for $15,000 to meet a matching grant for defibrillators. And then in regards to Shawsville, there was a similar request regarding heart monitor. Wanted to give you an idea, this group really does work through this whole process. And you hear people saying, I could put this off for another year, I can make do with what I have. But also you hear folks saying, no, you can't make do, we got to fix these things. And so I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. Obviously, we're starting up in budget season, but you're going to see those additional numbers coming from the fire and rescue, and I'm happy to answer any questions y'all might have in regards to that.
Any questions? Just one. Is that one-time money?
These are one-time items, except for the inflation costs. You know, and Blacksburg Rescue made a good point, there was a debate, should all of them start asking for, you know, roughly a 2% raise in their costs in regards to address inflation? And so while Blacksburg Rescue went ahead and left it in, there were other departments that said they were okay. But there was a general, so some of these items are one-time, but some of these items are going to be reoccurring costs.
Thank you.
Did I miss anything, Carol? Okay, you gave me that look, and I thought, oh, what did I forget? Oh, the radios are, as. The radios that we talked about are up and running. There's been a few little hiccups, but otherwise, they've been doing well. And, you know, here we've got a bunch of people who are volunteering, and now they can communicate with one another in a way that they've never been able to do before. And that's because of the work, Supervisor King, or Chair King, it brought to our attention that this was a problem, because he knows firsthand how difficult it was, it worked through the fire and rescue. Then you had volunteers who worked on this radio system to make sure it would work and gave up a lot of their time. And so, and now we've got this finished product, and we should all be very proud of that.
You should be, because you just got to use one radio now.
One radio.
Thank you. Supervisor Steve.
Not going to ask for any money, yet. But our, at my last meeting, the Rock Valley TPO, the Transportation Planning Organization, we had four guests that wanted to talk about reducing traffic on 81. And Mary, I'm sure that you'll find this interesting. It was all about rail, and it was moving commercial transportation off of the interstate and putting on the rail. And there was some interesting things that were mentioned, but two of them really caught my attention. One was getting Norfolk Southern to open up the intermodal station in Elliston. That was one. Which kind of didn't surprise me, but the question was asked, well, have, and this is a state employee that was bringing this up, and he was asked if anybody had talked to Norfolk Southern, and the answer was no. So I thought, was kind of funny, but that is one thing they were throwing out there. But another one was a very intriguing idea of putting tractor trailers, I mean, the whole thing, tractor and trailer, on trains at certain points on the eastern seaboard. One location was Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, they could be put on there and then taken off in Memphis, Tennessee. And what you would do is, you would eliminate them completely off of 81, which would be the route they would be taking. And the organization that presented that, they're just a private organization that came up with the idea, but I haven't visited it yet, but they have a website, if you Google "rolling highway." It's a concept that, according to the speaker, was widely used in Europe. So it was, it was just interesting. Of course, we all came up with questions as to how would you do this or that, but it's just the concept I thought was very, very interesting, to get some of that commercial traffic off. That's all I got.
Thank you. Supervisor Biggs.
I just wanted to hand in my letters for the VACO Committee for approval, I guess at our next meeting. I sent to you all, in fact, tonight, but you probably got the capital contact alert, and that is legislating, legislation affecting the valuation of machinery and tools. And it's real important that we let our House of Delegate members know that we oppose that. And so I've made contact with Nick Russian, Chris Hurst, but not Joe McNamara yet. I didn't have a contact number for, do you have a contact number for him?
I do.
Okay, can you send it to me, Chris?
Sure.
I'd be happy to do that. So it's House Bill 2640 by Delegate Bryan, and it should be looked at or voted on sometime this week, but they want us to go ahead and call people now. So be on the lookout, if you're not, if you don't get the capital contact, you know, sign up to get it, because they'll alert you. I get text messages. Do you guys get those from VACO, and it tells you what to do each day? And sometimes they go bam 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 bam, like, I'm like, you know, like, wait a minute, I'm driving the car. But yeah, they're really important because things, as you know, move really fast, and so you got to be right on it. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Bowman.
I want to thank Gay and Neil and our Parks and Rec Department for all that, the hard work, that it really shows, and those parks look outstanding, and be excited to get them sooner than later, so, thank you. I attended the, some of the tax sale auction a couple weeks ago. I thought it was a very interesting process. While I was there, I talked to the tax sale attorney, and he told me that the tax sales have generated $152,000 for the county so far, so I just wanted to pass that on to everybody. And I wanted to welcome the new treasurer, as well as thank our outgoing treasurer, Mr. Shelton. Now that I'm on the Planning Commission, I realized that I cannot be the alternative person for the library board, because they meet on the same night. So somebody else needs to do that. Yeah, so if anybody wants to be the alternative, that'd be great. I do want to speak about the Planning Commission meeting. Gay and Neil presented a development, a proposed development on Price's Fork. There were 14 community members that commented, and I'd say about 90% of their comments were about the traffic on Price's Fork. From what I understood, the traffic on Price's Fork is about 10,000 cars a day compared to Reiner being 12,000 cars per day. And the turning lanes in Reiner at the golf course seem to work well, and those are the same kind of turning lanes that they're going to implement on Price's Fork. So I just wanted to give you a heads up about some of the issues about it, as well as there were some comments about, you know, light pollution, or where are the deer going to go, and things like that, so that was interesting. I also attended the Dialogue on Race this Saturday, and I was shocked by a story that I wanted to share. And that was, a young black man, a particular young black man does not feel comfortable wearing a jacket to go to Kroger, no matter how warm or cold it is, because he feels uncomfortable that people will follow him, or suspect that he might be stealing. And I was absolutely shocked, because I thought we had gone, gotten a long way, and we didn't have a lot of race problems in our area. But this person was a student, so it must have been at a Blacksburg store. But in addition to that, something that the schools are doing are, they are hiring, making it a priority to hire, what's the right phrase, people of color, different ethnicities, qualified people for as many MCPS positions as possible. And I thought that was pretty fantastic, so I wanted to share those two things. And I'd have to say, this was my second Dialogue on Race program that I attended, and it was pretty great. They did a great job. I was very impressed. That's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Sheppard.
I was going to say a few words about the development that the Planning Commission heard the public hearing on. Sarah did a very good job, Ms. Bowen did a very good job. I will say one thing, the Gay and Neil and the developer, I've spoke with them several times since that meeting, and they've been very good to work with and have suggested some changes, and I think they are working on that, so I appreciate that of them. And I appreciate all the hard work going into the presentations, both from Ms. Gibson and Gay and Neil.
Thanks, all of you. Supervisor DeMoss.
Just a couple of things. I think Craig already mentioned that we are planning on going to Lobby Day later on this week. What is that? There's also the Chairman's Institute that I will be attending. It's for chairs and vice chairs. And as I was reviewing the agenda for the Chairman's Institute, I saw a familiar name on the agenda. Supervisor Biggs will actually be teaching one of the classes, so.
I don't know if you can call teaching. Engaging others.
Should be engaging in one of the classes. But she is listed as one of the VIPs there, so I thought it was important to point that out. I also wanted to just give you guys a little bit of follow-up information on the money that we set aside for solar, and what the MCIC has been able to do already. Now, of course, we haven't, you know, made any decisions on how to advise that it be spent, but what they have started doing, starting with our February meetings, instead of meeting once per month, we will be meeting twice per month, just to make sure that we're staying very engaged in that process, and it's not really delayed before we hear from that again. We're also looking, currently they're working in GIS to look for different locations that might work. They're looking for possibly eight to 10 locations, looking for the most bang for the buck, where are you going to get the most visibility? Where also is it going to be of most use? And then we're also, Bill Long in General Services is reaching out to other localities in Virginia that have implemented other solar installations to see what they did, how they determined where locations were going to be. So he's just kind of asking some questions and feeling out other localities. And then finally, they've been talking to a gentleman by the name of Tony Smith. He works for a company called Secure Futures that assisted with the array built at the Carillion Hospital. And Tony has agreed to provide just a little bit of information and insight into how to identify potential sites for projects. So again, we're meeting twice a month now. We really want to take some initiative and get some information together. And then their goal is then to come back to our board and present some options and take questions and see if we're going in the right direction with what's wanted here. So definite progress is being made on that front. And then finally, I just wanted to put in another plug for funding for Parks and Rec. I would really like to encourage us all to look at ways that we can build those beautiful parks.
Thank you. Thank you. I just have a couple of things. First thing is, first Saturday, February, be oyster and turkey supper out around the fire department, out the elementary school. Number two is, I was excited to watch the news this evening for once. I seen Allegheny School District and school buses go to Richmond and walk on Richmond, tell them they want their money. I would like to see Virginia State Teachers Association, whatever it is, to coordinate every school district in the Commonwealth of Virginia and get them out and up in Richmond. I thought that was really good. Like I said, I got excited about it. And Ms. April told me she thought some of the Montgomery County school teachers was there.
Can I, can I talk about?
Some of them was.
VEA did organize, today was Wear Red for Education Day in Richmond. They had hundreds of teachers there, and our own teachers that were there posted on the Montgomery County Education Association website. They posted, and they actually were there with the governor outside, and they visited the legislators, so they were there in full force.
I know some of them from Allegheny was talking to the news, talking about, West Virginia done it, California done it. And to be honest with you, I was excited to see it. Yeah. I mean, you know, they keep coming local, and we keep giving them, but it's time for the state to take over their part. Thank you all. Do you have anything else? Meeting adjourned, thank you all for coming out.